Is on. Thank you. They put new batteries in everyone, so you should be able to see that little light. They did go off before, I guess, when the batteries were low, but. Eileen told me they're all set now, so just make sure. So, um, call the April meeting of planning board to order. I'll call the roll. Mr. Engard.
Here.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mr. Youthie.
Here.
Place Chair McCumsky.
Okay.
Mr. Grove.
And Mr. Miller.
Here and stand and salute the flag. Attention allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Thank you. Welcome. It looks like we have someone joining us on Zoom, Karen and Joe Miller. Hi, Joe. Hi, Karen. Welcome. Um, I did send out a corrected agenda. Uh, I think everyone's picked it up. Holly mistakenly sent out the March agenda. She was busy getting ready to go out of town. And she just missed that. So we'll start with the privilege of the floors. Anything that anyone wants to mention that's not on the agenda? Okay, I do. I, I passed out on the table in front of you this list of training opportunities. I think they're webinars. They're free and you do, you do get credit for them. And the one, there's one coming up, I think this Thursday, actually in the seeker. You know, if you haven't, if you're interested at all in seeker, you know, that might be one you might want to attend. Um, unless it's too late to register, but the register age, register information is like here in the third line. Couple of the others that are coming up might be interesting, too. The. Specialized zoning tools, local regulation cannabis, some of the other ones maybe not, but. Remember, we do need four hours every year this, uh, from now on, so there are some opportunities. And we do have the Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning, um, training coming up in Batavia. In May, I think we, I sent everyone that information before. Uh, so you can, if you're planning to go to that, uh, you can talk to Krista Hoover and she'll sign you up. Ahead of time, so you don't have to send a check in. She'll sign you up and pay for you. And I think you have to sign up a couple of weeks in advance for that, so plenty of training opportunities around right now. And that's all I wanted to mention in that. We'll move to the approval of the minutes. Probably put in the packet, any corrections? Nope, I didn't have any corrections either, so I guess I didn't have a motion to make, make a motion. We approve the minutes. Hey, Birch, Craig, is there a second?
I second.
Dwight, thank you very much. All in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, that's carried. Thanks. We'll go right into the reports. Uh, Town Board meeting. Town Board met on April tenth. Well, the first thing they did was they resumed, reopened a public hearing. Uh, there was a request for a septic system setback variance on sixty-six hundred South Old Bald Hill Road. Um, this is a carryover from the previous month. There were several residents in attendance by Zoom and they had some. Concerns about granting any subject permit, basically. Uh, they weren't so much concerned with the setback. They were just concerned about. Granting a septic license or permit. They were saying, well, you know, it's a highly concentrated area, lots of houses there. We're not sure the area can support another septic system. Um, and they, they wanted a little more information the previous month, so Chris Bastolo. About Board of Health, they suspended, they tabled the, uh, meeting and reopened it. Uh, the upshot was they heard a few more complaints from the same group of people that were there the previous month. Uh, they did take a vote. Again, Bill Grove is the engineer. You know, he designs these things. That's. Most of his business, they're all compliant with the, uh, state codes. Ontario County Soil and Water, he works with them. So it was a well-designed, uh, system that all regulations. So the Board of Health did vote four to nothing to grant the variance. The variance was about a ten-foot variance. I think the code called for ADP and they were going to be able to be seventy feet, so they needed a ten-foot variance.
So four to nothing?
Yeah, there were only four members there.
I saw that.
Someone was missing.
Previous month, they was absent. Was it Sean? Or, or?
I don't remember who was, who was. I think John O'Connor was absent this, this month.
I was just curious, is there something wrong?
So that was their first order of business. Um. Second order of business, they mentioned that the, uh, Honeyway Rotary is sponsoring eight performances, summer performances. At the gazebo in Richmond this summer, um, from July seventh to August twenty-fifth. And. That was his, those were his privilege of the floor comments. They went into reports, um, standard reports. Uh, Town Clerk had her report. Code Enforcement Officer had his report, which we'll look at later. We have a copy of that as well. Highway Department, uh. They reported that had fifteen salt and plow runs since the previous meeting. Uh, three plowing just for drifting snow. They'd actually done some pothole patching, clearing downed trees, you know. The ash trees all over town falling down and many of them are falling in the roads, so our highway department is, is taking care of the ones in roads. And so they had done several of those. They has, having some mechanical problems with the new ten-wheeler truck that they just purchased. Hydraulic leaks, so they had it back to the manufacturer or the garage to have those repaired. Honey Lake Watershed Task Force, Task Force, actually they didn't write anything down, so apparently there was nothing significant there. Um, they moved into. New business, oh, excuse me, unfinished business, uh, they put out bids to have the lawn. Uh, mowing, mowing this summer. They didn't say how many they had received, if any. Um, they did, did, oh yes, they did, uh, Quality Landscape, Steve Krieger's group, uh, had put in a bid. Sidewalk bids, they had received two or three, so they were going to look those over to do the repair on the concrete sidewalks. And the other old finish, unfinished business was apparently the town had ordered a Ford Maverick. For the CEO, uh, to use. Guess the new state regulations don't, they don't call for. CEOs to be using a private, uh, personal vehicles any longer. So the town was going to buy one, but the factory canceled the order, uh. Not only on ours, but several orders for those, uh, small trucks. Um. So they're going to pass down to Joe. Third-hand pickup. They're either going to get a new pickup for the supervisor. Superintendent, superintendent. Pass the superintendent's down to the crew and the one that the crew's using is going to be turned over to the CEO's office to use, at least. For now. So that was, those were the unfinished businesses. New business, uh. They accepted, accepted the audit on the town court. Apparently that was okay approved. And they passed a resolution to buy another new ten-wheel plow truck. They do this on a regularly scheduled basis and re, every so many years they replace one. And, uh, let's see. That's pretty much all. Yep, that's all I had from the meeting. Any questions? Okay. Okay. Move on to county planning. Steve Grove.
Okay, we met April twelfth. Met April twelfth, uh, attended that, uh, the county planning board meeting. Uh, we had two big solar project referrals. Uh, one from the town of Manchester on State Route thirty-one, it's a thirteen and a half megawatt facility. On the, oh, uh, hundred and sixteen acre pit parcel. Which they, uh, will disturb about half of that, fifty-one acres. It totaled number solar panels. Over twenty-five thousand panels themselves. This is on a, uh, used to be a, uh. Sand gravel pit. They reclaimed it to farmland. Currently. It's not being farmed, but it's, it's in the Ag District. And similar type thing, and it's unfortunate. You know, we all understand the reasons for that. Many times, uh, the property owners and taxes, things of that nature. But it's, you know, farmland being chopped up like that and absorbed, it's, uh, it's. You wish it wasn't happening. And also the same type of thing in town of Geneva. More farmland in the Ag District being actively farmed. This is a hundred and twelve acre parcel. Uh, it's going to have like two projects. One's going to be thirteen megawatt and the other one ten, uh, megawatt. That's the only thing really mentioned.
So did the towns, those are going in, do they have solar regulations on their town books already?
Or? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So i- in each one of them, they already have a solar?
Just about. And, and every one we come across, uh, yeah, it's, it's out there now.
Okay. Questions for Steve? Thank you. Zoning Board, uh, zoning board met a couple of times. They are recording their meetings, but, uh, there's no sound. Again, Joe. Um, Joe Miller, the, uh. Zoning Board meetings are being recorded on Zoom, but there's no sound. This is like three or four meetings. You might want to have your tech, you know, your tech person look into that and see. Because they're not meeting the requirements for the, uh, town meetings by not having the sound there. Okay. I think you're probably the best one to, uh, mention that to them. Yeah. So, uh, we didn't get any, uh, any, uh. Feedback from them that there's any action required of us on the planning board, so.
Joe, I wonder if they're muting by accident, so it's automatically unmuted when they open it. I don't know if they think that it's muted, but if you look in the bottom left-hand corner. The microphone should have like a little bit of green on it. Um, and as long as there's green on there, then, then they're unmuted and the sound should be recording.
Yeah, I, so the last meeting wasn't recorded on Zoom because it was a, a personnel meeting, I guess. They, they were just. Um. I don't know, going over applications for, uh, openings on the board. So they, they just were, were recording it by hand, I guess.
Well, any New York State open meeting laws, anytime a board gets together for any type of meeting. That's an open meeting and they would need to record it by law.
So. Okay. All right. I didn't know that.
And yeah, did they have a special meeting on three-one, was it?
Uh, I know there was a special meeting, um. What date? I, I'm not sure.
Cause they didn't have, they don't have an agenda on the kind of website. Yeah. So they're not meeting the New York State Open Meetings laws.
Okay, well, so Linda, Linda Morehouse did put her resignation in at the last meeting. She's going to stay on. Uh, uh, she's going to stay on the board, but she's not, um, going to be the chair anymore. Ed Bott's going to be the chair.
Okay. So nothing's really changing very much then.
Not, not really, um.
Okay. Thank you, but you, you should mention that zoning, the, the recording requirement. By New York State law now to have those recorded with sounds that we listen to. Thanks, Joe.
I'll mention that.
Uh, next thing on the reports was code enforcement. Joe gave us his, uh, report, gave it to you guys if you have any questions for him. Now's your chance. Yeah.
I was just curious, Joe. I saw several of his, uh. Unregistered vehicle and a report. And you noted them here. Is that because, like, I'm just curious again, did someone write in for that, uh? Fill out a, uh. Complaint form?
Okay. The, the unregistered violations were, were, uh, complaints. Um, and then I go investigate and if they have more than.
Okay. That sucks.
Okay, anything else for Joe? I have one question. So registered vehicles. You're allowed ones, unregistered vehicle? And the rest have to be inside or on the copper?
Correct.
Which is it?
It's, it's both, uh, it, it, they can be covered or inside, um, and. They're also, we, we have a law in our code that says that you're allowed to have, uh, two. Motor vehicles on your property as, as long as you're storing them only. Um, because unregistered vehicles, um, uh, uh. Motor home would be considered a, a, a vehicle too, so that has to be registered, but our town code says you can have up to two. Uh, in storage on your property.
So which takes precedent, New York State or our town?
Uh, well, according to executive law, um, anything that's more stringent takes precedent, so it would be our town. Um, well, actually.
The state says one.
Right, so it would be the state, so it would be the state. It would be one.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else for Joe? Thanks so much, Joe. Appreciate it. That takes care of the reports, um. Put down here, old business, just to, to, uh, follow up. Uh, I put down the subdivision application of Karen Sullivan for property of sixty-six thirty-three, County Road thirty-seven. Tax map number. Um, you recall back in November, uh, Sullivan's were here with a application for subdivision. We reviewed that application. We gave preliminary, preliminary approval because it did meet regulations. We held a public hearing and we did the seeker. At that point, somewhere along the line, it was brought up that the property was in violation. And the, uh, we, we stopped process of that application. Insulted with the CEO at that time. CEO had told, had sent us a notice that we should not continue that. Uh, approval process until something was done with the property. Um, Steve left, Joe, Joe came in, and so Joe has worked with him, and I included in the packet. A letter from Joe Miller, our CEO. Um, and I can, you can just read it, but basically, uh, Joe has worked with Sullivan's, come to an agreement. Um, and actually the, set the, I put, put it on the front and back of what single page, what the agreement was, and so Joe Miller is. Uh, satisfied that the Sullivan's are going to move ahead and try to mitigate that situation. And giving us planning board, uh, an approval to continue processing their subdivision application. So, um, I just included the paperwork, so you've got it there. I didn't call.
Go ahead.
I did call and I spoke with Lee Sullivan and, uh, mentioned that. Cause I wasn't sure whether Joe had actually sent a letter to Sullivan's or not, but I did speak with, uh, Lee Sullivan. Uh, right after, shortly after I received this from Joe Miller, our CEO, and, uh. He said, okay, I'm up on this, so that's pretty much it. But basically what, where we left process is that they are now going to. I assume they're going to continue this. The next step is for them to actually engage a surveyor. Have the property surveyed showing the subdivided, uh, properties and, you know, what the survey map should include. So, uh, I told him that and told him to let us know. When they had that ready, they'd come back into a, a regular meeting. We'd look it over. Make sure they agreed with what we had given preliminary approval for, and then, uh, they would be, that that would be approved. So that's where that application stands.
So I guess my question.
Yes.
Was there is a deadline here. They have everything removed by August thirty-first.
Right.
So if they get approval on the plan before that date. And there's still cars there. Would, we just wait to August thirty-first?
A touch of a code enforcement. Yeah.
Hey, Joe.
And if you read the last sentence on his letter, basically he's saying it's his recommendation at this time that the state lifted.
I read that.
And maybe, so it's really in the hands of Joe.
Okay, follow up, we proceed as a regular application.
And that is a, you know, that is a potential, you know, that Joe has worked out as, as well or as good as he could with them. And taking them at their word that this is going to meet. So if it comes up to this date and it, it's not been made, it's, again, it throws it back into his hand, but. We will have already given final approval to the subdivision.
I can speak a little bit onto that.
Oh, okay. Sure, Joe.
Um, so I did speak with Lee and Karen and they showed me, uh, specifically where they were subdividing and. Um, one of my concerns was that a lot of the cars and, and stuff were on the property that he wanted to subdivide, but. Uh, he did show me that there were only two vehicles on the property that he wanted to subdivide because we couldn't move them yet. Um, so I asked him if he could at least move them onto his property. He said one of them, he did. Um, and then the other one, he couldn't move because it was too big. So right now, the, the property that he wants to subdivide. There's only one vehicle on that property, because I, I didn't want to, I didn't want them to transfer. Uh, you know, violations over to somebody who was gonna, you know, either buy it or get the subdivision.
Right.
Yep.
Let's see how it works out.
Well.
Is this a verbal agreement or is there like a written document of them agreeing to this?
Uh, there's a, uh, email chain, um, and they came in and did, we did talk about it. And then I sent them a letter, um, right after I emailed Ted. About that.
Hey, you did send him a letter?
Yeah, because he, he had agreed to end of summer, because I told him he had to have a date. You know, or, uh, yeah, whatever, so I, I gave him a, um, the August thirty-first as the deadline. And he agreed.
Okay, well, to me it's not ideal because. You have no leverage here, you know, if, if we go ahead and approve the final subdivision and he doesn't follow up with his end, then. It's not, there's nothing, we as a planning board. No, but the town, the town board can do so. Town board can, but he will already have subdivided the state operating by that, so. Okay. Anything else about that? So we can expect a final survey at some point. I assume, again, you know, he just said yes and hung up on me, so he didn't tell me anything about what his plans were, um. So we'll leave it at that.
Now, typically from the time of preliminary approval, they have six months to submit.
Hmm. I don't know if there's a timeline for them to submit. There's certainly a timeline for us. Once we, you know, we have to do things on a timeline. I'm not sure if there's a timeline between preliminary approval and. Final survey. We'd have to look that up.
Okay, and I'm just curious.
Steve, I don't know if there is.
I think we all agreed to table, right?
Well, yeah, we had tabled it, but, um, we're saying, assuming they come in next month, then that will restart that clock. And we'll look. I'm assuming that, yeah. So it's, it's been tabled, so the clock has been stopped.
Okay.
Or paused. Okay, yes, Steve Grove.
So then if. If we do have any other questions, we could ask them when they come back in with the map and. When we're considering final approval. As opposed to asking questions tonight.
What would be questions? What, what kind of questions might you ask?
Well, I, I just had, quite frankly, um. I wanted someone to explain this to me again, because I, I really don't know. I had this, I went back to my November.
Right.
Packet, and I, I just can't figure out on this what's being done and who's on first.
Okay.
Uh.
We have approved it, so the only questions we would have at this point would be questions about the final survey map. I mean, we can look at it, but basically it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. Whatever that map is.
And do you, do you know, Steve, like, is, is this, is this the old, uh?
This is that property? This is not, but.
Right, but.
This lot here is being subdivided away from this lot.
Right, and this is that lot. So this is their house over here.
This part.
And this little barn out from.
Coming on there.
And then to there. So, so then the bad part of this would then go to this.
Right.
Parcel here.
Yep.
So this. Going to that.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what, okay. So we had approved and the preliminary, so.
Okay, so, so that. From this picture, this looks like the relatively clean part of the whole parcel.
Pretty wooded there, yeah.
Yeah.
Basically forest land.
Yeah, okay. And that would, the piece that remains in the Sullivan ownership then is where. Uh, there's some contention at the, at the moment.
But all those.
And that's they're committing to hopefully.
Clean up, clean up the site.
Okay, but the piece that's going, intended to go to this property here, looks relatively clean.
Yeah, like Joe said, they're only in free vehicle, one vehicle in there, so. One free one.
Yeah, no, yeah, okay, yeah, great, okay.
And that, I, I guess we want to make sure, you know, when they come back with a survey, we will only be looking at. Does what they have final agree with what we've already approved. Those questions like you just asked, we did ask at the time and, and we don't. Revisit that unless the final survey doesn't agree with, with this, basically what we.
I was just trying to.
I want you, I want everybody to make sure they know what we're doing and what we've already done. It's been four, four months, five months here.
Right.
You just forgot what was being subdivided out and added to what.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it makes, I, I mean, it is slight improvement because it gets rid of this little, uh, twenty-five foot, uh, whatever it is.
Gets rid of the play.
Play, yeah. Okay. All right, that's Sullivan. And the next, uh, item I put on the agenda was the Shaw site plan. Uh, again, we've been handling this for several months, um. At the last meeting, we had re, the, the re-subdivision of the two lots had been accomplished, basically joining the two properties. To a single property, therefore it brought that into conformance for road frontage. And the only thing left was to clean up the map. Final site map, they just had to locate the, uh, put some distances on for the septic. Basically from the north property line and locate where the well. I have the final map, um, everything is there. If somebody wants to look at it. Um, you're welcome to it. I didn't make copies, uh, but it's, it's here. And we do have the original one where he had all of the additional information, you know. Uh, driveway layouts, so this is all in the, in the file. Um, if you ever want to look at any of that, so basically, um, his site plan. There, uh, the Shaw's site plan is complete, met all regulations. I gave a copy of the final site plan to Joe. Uh, because the engineer said they would be, be coming in soon to apply for building permits, so. So you're all straight on that, Joe, that, uh, they got final approval on that site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that new map, so it has everything that, uh.
Yep, there it is, yes. He didn't have the distances on a couple of the things. That was the only, uh. Issue on this, on the site map.
The engineer did want to speak to me about, uh, the fire apparatus access road too. He wanted to make sure that. Um, the pull-offs and stuff were, were to spec. Um, but we haven't met yet.
Well, I think the site plan regulation that we have only calls for a turnaround at the end. I don't think it's. Did it hit pull-ups in our regulations?
Yeah, every fifteen.
Okay, yeah.
I think it was.
They did mine those, okay, they're on, they're on this one.
Yeah, he seemed quite knowledgeable about it.
And I, I wasn't sure why he wanted to speak with me, but. He, he did email me quite a few times trying to.
Yeah, he likes, he likes to email.
Yeah.
So that. So that completes their uh site plan. And. They're gonna move forward with the project. So those were the two things I listed here for old business. Um, we didn't have any new business. We do have a. Subdivision application, um, but I've not been able to meet up with the owner. Um, to go over that, so it's not on our agenda for tonight. It's a property on South Old Bald Hill Road. And I can't make. Heads or tails of what he's what he's put in with his application, so we need to meet and I'll be calling somebody to meet once we get a. Uh, a time set up to meet on a Thursday night. Go over that and then we'll bring it to the board. So that's the only thing that I know of that's even coming down the the line as a possibility. And that brings us to the last privilege of the floor. Is there anything anybody wants to? Bring up?
Uh, I didn't know if you wanted to chat about the comp plan, that supervisor vessel.
I I didn't see. You can chat about, I don't know what it is you're talking about.
Sent out an email. I'm not surprised you didn't get it. I think you sent it out about six o'clock. Just.
Six o'clock.
Uh, it was very last minute. Um, just bringing up again that he was wanting to get the comprehensive plan. Process moving forward, um, so I did chat with him just before the meeting, um, and I offered to chair that committee. Um, and we just chatted about it a little bit. So he is going to do a resolution formally directing us to start that process. He said potentially next month.
So what was the last time it was updated?
Uh, two thousand seven. Then it's supposed to be a ten-year update, so it's it's several years overdue.
Is that when it was adopted or?
I thought it was later on in seven.
I don't know. I don't know. I thought that's what he said, but maybe I misunderstood.
So really.
Older than oh seven. We went over this, it was formally adopted by.
Maybe I misunderstood and he meant that that's where the process started. I might have missed.
Yeah, that may be when it started. Okay.
Well, how often does it really need to be updated?
Believe that. New York State calls for ten years.
Ten years.
It was still looking at every five and formally updated and adopted every ten.
Every time. That's that the planning board exists.
Well, what I had told our supervisor is.
Plan for the.
He kept mentioning this over the years and I said, you as a town board need to formally request. What is the town take this on as a project and give us authority to create a research group or hire somebody? You know. And then give us a budget uh to work with, but we, you know, we need more than an email. I, you know. Emails aren't legal, you know, like I asked Joe to send us a letter about the solid, you know, he'd sent me an email. I said. We need something. I personally don't trust emails. If somebody can modify them. So. I've asked Chris Vestola. Have the town board make a resolution, give us something in writing and. But yes, it is in the purview of the the planning board. Well, we can have a chat G P T write it for him. And we won't. Well.
We did.
We talked, I talked with Tom Harvey several years ago and he has pledged support in his office. At the time and last time around, Tom actually was. I think he led the project, he wasn't the chairman, but he led the project. So, so we've been tapped into some resource there and it looks like.
Yep, yep, we chatted about that a little bit, chatted about the budget and. What resources are available and that we needed a resolution.
Yep. I'm sure he mentioned, you know, just. As as it gets going, we really wanna elicit residents' support. We really need people, not just planning board people or town board people. We need some residents on that committee. Uh. Because we're representing them. Different ideas than we have. So.
So the comprehensive plan is somewhere.
Yes, it's online. I actually have a. Digital copies of it.
We used to all get them.
Yeah. Chris Singer at. She didn't want to turn them off. For us.
Some of the kind of website.
But it used to be a nice thing because every planning board member got one in a binder. Used to be we all brought them, so then we wanted to know the intent of law.
Maybe that's.
Our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan is really a guiding document for the board as well as the code.
Right.
That's intention is to elicit community response, things. That you wanna see in the town, you know, do we wanna protect its rural character? Do we wanna protect? Our natural resources, things like that. Talks about transportation, all, you know, a very broad um scope. And then that helps to guide us when we're looking at applications.
Yeah. I I agree with Steve. I think we all should have a hard copy of it.
You know, we do have all the hardware to reproduce it now without a color copier that. Colates and we've got three bolt punch and we can, all we have before was it was in three ring binders. We printed up a nice color cover for it. But everybody had a full copy that they could bring around, write up their. Their code book.
Even if we just had one or two that we could have out. Or needed, you know, maybe we don't have to schlep them all back and forth, but. If we had a question, we could at least have it on the table and.
I used to try to make people research stuff in between meetings that.
Well. And I'm I'm sure that as a committee is formed or research, as they call it, you know, they'll wanna see what the existing one is. So there will be copies. And I think you can take these discs over to one of the print shops and get them run off.
I still have mine. I can run it through the copier.
You're the newest one?
Yeah. There you go.
There you go.
Good deal.
Should do that. Of course, I would appreciate having a hard copy myself.
Sure.
So that's that's going to be in the works. Again, we'll get a formal resolution and that triggers the action. And. Maybe somebody come and come up with some good ideas of how to get residents. Involvement, you know, a lot of the residents don't look at the website, you know. So maybe we have to have placard signs out, you know, that we're looking for.
We had trouble with the updates before and we did the surveys and send out cards. I don't know if I can do that or not, but we had this all that survey. Actually, we have the raw data in there in the file.
Yeah, we'll definitely need to do a survey. I would suggest we do um online. Survey predominantly and have some written copies for people that need one. Um, I also mentioned to Supervisor Vestola that it may be time that the town thinks about getting an email program. Um, so that residents can start signing up to receive email updates from the town um. I don't know if that's something that he will pursue or if we have the staff capacity to be able to do that. Um, but I do think that that's a really effective way to engage with people, not just about. Comprehensive planning, but you know, you send out meeting agendas and. Planning board vacancies and things like that. It's a great way to. Communicate with the public. So I would. Suggest that. Many others.
Candles on the website already, so are you proposing send emails?
It'd be a push type thing where you're pushing information out. Right now, you have to go to the website.
Right.
You have to know, so you have to check it daily, really, but. If you have something where. If something changes on the website or they you wanna send out a notice like weekly. You can automate it. So if things change on the website. The weekly email would show you what's changing.
And who's the distributor? Who are these emails going to? So what do you sign up for? They sign up for?
Yes, so we would have, and I think that this would be a good opportunity to roll something like that out if we're trying to engage with the public to get them to do a survey and. Um. Why not? Have a resource where we can continually engage with them throughout the process.
I like it. We used to have the candidate. John Hopkins, he would send out a newsletter every month.
Yeah.
And it was very engaging. People really liked it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, like things like every time we have an agenda come out. It would go out via email as well as being posted to the website. Or um if we have a survey. For residents, that would go out via email or the town board agenda or. Um. If the highway is gonna be paving a road. Or there's a water main break or they're flushing hydrants. Um, any of these things would be information that could be sent out via email.
Like it, are you gonna be the staff?
Well.
I. Capacity and that is one thing that we discussed. I said, I don't know if we have the staff to do this, but.
You can set the website. You can set a website where automatically. Weekly send updates, changes in the website.
Purchase volunteering to be the staff.
But I know you could.
Automating takes somebody manually.
Yeah, right. Well, somebody still has to manage it, you know. Uh, it sounds great.
And and maybe it's something that's sort of divvied up where the highway superintendent has access and he can send. You know, his things and um.
Jeremy, Jeremy does that now on Facebook.
Yeah, exactly. He does. He does.
But you have to go to Facebook and there you have to have.
Yeah.
He does do it, but doesn't show and I'm on Facebook, but I don't get his stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, there's different algorithms on Facebook, so he he's obviously already making an effort to engage. I feel like he would be very supportive of something like that.
Yeah, I don't, we we don't have money and planning board budget to, you know, pay someone for part-time to to administer that. We've already set our budget for twenty twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three. Remainder of the year.
But that would be a town thing, that planning board, right?
Yeah, it would be tech.
Yeah.
All of the parts of the town would be involved.
Uh, yeah.
So it's in Chris Vestola's. Hands.
Yeah, it would probably be in some sort of technology budget line.
Yeah.
Some sort of A line.
Okay.
Um, but we.
Thanks for volunteering for that.
Chat about it a little bit, so.
Typically, we have, you know. You can't have more than four, you can't have more than three planning board members on that recent, on any research committee, because then it becomes. An official board meeting, a forum, so you're limited in terms of number of planning board members. It could be on the committee, but you're unlimited in terms of residents. It's a volunteer, you know, you're not paying. To participate. Okay, great. Anything else for a privilege of Steve Groth? Yes.
Are you saying one thing? I I I I wanted to uh. Thank. Joe on behalf of the planning board here for him taking the time and. The effort to attend our meetings because it it really helps clarify. Some of these uh questions that we come up with and we get a. For the most part, an immediate answer and uh it really helped and I thank you, Joe.
Yeah, no problem.
I appreciate that too, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Um, Aaron Henry, I see you're on uh meetings. Is there anything you want to uh comment on?
No, thank you.
Okay. And.
A second.
So Steve Engard motion adjourned and Dwight Youthy second, all in favor? I close. Thank you, everyone. See you next month.